I'd like to call the order. The public hearing evening of the Kingston Planning Board, October 15th at 6:47 PM. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce the people sitting around the table. To my left is Rob Tesola, who's a Planning Board member, Ben Romano, a Planning Board member, Peter Coffin, a Planning Board member. I'm Lynn Merrill, I'm the Chair. Robin Carter is our land use administrator. Ellie Alessio is our selectmen's representative. Beside Ellie shortly will be Robin Dugay, who is Vice Chair of the Board, and Glenn Greenwood, who is our Town Planner. The first hearing tonight is applicant Derek Vader, property owners Derek Vader and Nicole Vader and Justin Perkins. We're looking at three parcels in MAP U4, lots 25, 27, and 29, 18th, 10th Street, 7th Street, 44 Great Pond Park Road, respectively. It's a single-family residential. This application is a request for a boundary line, lot line adjustment between MAP U4 Lot 25, 18th, 10th Street, a .37 acre lot. Lot U4, no, MAP U4 Lot 27, 7th, 7th Street, and U4 Lot 29, 44 Great Pond Park Road, all located in a single-family residential district. This proposal listed transfer .11 acres from U4-27 to U4-25 to increase the lot size to .48 acres for Lot 25, and the remainder of U4-27 will become part of U4-29. So for those of you at home, it may sound confusing, but as we come through the evening...
Because it is.
Yes, it is. But as we come through the evening, it will probably become clearer for you. So, is Derek Vader here? Welcome. Come have a seat at the table. So the first thing you need to do is to put this in your hand and turn it on so it looks green. You do need to introduce yourself and you need to tell us where you live. And for anyone who wants to speak on this, any member of the audience, it'll be the same format. You'll come forward, introduce yourself, tell us where you live, and then give us your public comment during public comment time. First thing that will happen is the applicant will present what he'd like to do. The members of the board will ask questions, will read any comments we've received from town departments, and then we'll discuss it, we'll hear from our Town Planner, and then we'll discuss it amongst ourselves, and we'll ask the public comment, and then we'll make some sort of a decision. There you are.
Derek, I would suggest laying that on the counter like this. Right on, you'd be all set.
Okay. So I acquired, well, I purchased these, this property that is in question right now. I purchased this property a few years ago from the town. And there is a piece, there's a right-of-way that's going between this property, which is basically 10th Street, and there's a piece of this property that's on the other side of the 10th Street that abuts Justin Perkins' property, that I don't, that move was going to sell to him, because I bought the two properties that are right there that I bought. I live at 44 Great Pond Road, and these two properties are on the backside of my property. So basically in between Great Pond Road and 10th Street. So basically, I bought everything that's in between Great Pond, 10th Street, and the two paper streets on each side. So I own everything in between there. But again, the other piece is on the other side of 10th Street, which abuts him. Basically, my side of the road.
Good. The second person.
I'm sorry, Justin Perkins.
There's no public comment on this court? So we have no comment from the department house? We can skip that portion of the meeting? Go ahead.
Derek has been in the planning board office regularly for about the last year, so we've got to know each other really well. This is a really interesting boundary line adjustment. So, the description on the plan, and everybody has that before you, tells you just what's going on. The oddness is that in this particular instance, we have, we're really taking a non-conforming lot and making it disappear entirely. It gets, it gets cut not in half, but in basically a third, two-thirds. Two-thirds of it go to Mr. Vader, he already owns it, he keeps two-thirds of that lot, and one-third of it goes to, I'm sorry, Justin.
Justin Perkins.
Perkins, yeah, Mr. Perkins. So normally, when we deal with non-conforming lots, especially if we're dealing with them in an instance where you have a boundary line adjustment, the ZBA has to be involved, because usually, we're making one non-conforming lot smaller and another non-conforming lot bigger. Making non-conforming lots bigger is fine, the ZBA doesn't have to be involved. When you make a non-conforming lot smaller, they have to provide the authority to do that. But in this case, two non-conforming lots are getting bigger, and one non-conforming lot is not going to exist anymore. So, that concept really bothered me for about two and a half months. And I spoke with the building inspector, I spoke with the ex-Planning Board Chairman, who's now a Board of Selectment member, and eventually, Mr. Vader agreed to pay our Town Council to look at this and give us some guidance. And her guidance, it's our former council, not Attorney Roman, it's, what was, what was our former council's name?
Hadi.
Hadi, thank you. God, I'm a little... She, she came back with a decision that said she was comfortable with not needing ZBA action, because no lot exists anymore. So you're not creating a smaller lot, you're just making one lot disappear entirely. So with that being the case, her guidance was, all of this can be taken care of by the planning board. And with that guidance, Millennium Engineering, and I gotta say, Millennium Engineering told me outright, he felt that was appropriate right from the get-go. And Henry Board is a really sharp surveyor, I've worked with him a lot, but I really didn't want to hear from him, from council, instead of just from Derek's representative. So, we went to council, and council completely agreed that it was okay to do. So that's the proposal you have before you. We will end up with one less lot out there and two larger lots. And then, at the very end of all of this, Mr. Vader intends to merge another lot that he abuts with his present lot. So it'll be a much bigger lot, and we'll have only two lots remaining instead of four, which anybody who drives down there, having you come down to two lots instead of four is a really good idea. It's a really good idea. So going through all of that, I really, my only comments are that Mr. Vader will be responsible for preparing some new deeds. First, because of the addition of land to his existing parcel, he'll have to do a new deed for that. But in his efforts to also merge the last lot together with his, he'll have to have the deed for that changed, so it has both his name and his wife's name, because that's what's happened. That's how it exists on its present parcel, and in order to merge lots, the deeds all have to be in the same name. But beyond that, this plan very well represents what is hoped to be accomplished and should result in much better circumstances.
So if we look at the very dark lines, that's what's showing the two of them.
Nope. Almost. We show, we show all of them. We should add it.
I do too.
So, here is Justin's parcel.
Correct.
And this, and this odd, this L right here, is all one lot. It's bisected by this random rate.
Okay.
This and this of this lot will be merged with this lot.
Right, so here is this lot.
Right.
Here is this lot.
And then this parcel, this piece of this former lot will go here.
Yep.
And eventually, this lot right here will be merged with this one also.
Okay.
So all of this, all of this land right here will be Mr. Vader's, and this piece that used to be Mr. Vader's won't be split by right-of-way and will go to Mr. Perkins.
Okay.
And it is ugly, but it is really pretty.
It's beautiful compared to what you showed me last year.
Oh my God.
So, we have two streets here that were never built, 7th and 8th, 7th and 6th. So Mr. Perkins, how do you access your lot?
Right now, it's basically 7th Street is basically my driveway.
Okay. So you kind of go the right-of-way that goes from like 10th Street up and then take a left?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know that area much better than I do. I went down there a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, I sold one of the lots that is in that kind of area, so I've driven up that street a few times. Driven up the path.
It is more of a path.
Yes, it is more of a...
Yeah.
Does anybody on the board, anyone on the board have any questions I'd like to ask? Go for it, Ben.
So, I'm a little confused on this right-of-way, apparent right-of-way, is that an express? Isn't that 10th Street?
Yes, the right-of-way is referred to as 10th Street.
Benny, use the microphone. There you go.
Although, is that actually, I looked on the town GIS, if that is actually, is it shown on any deeds as a right-of-way? Because I see it's marked as an apparent right-of-way. I mean, we're not going to deal with that tonight, because it's not, in our purview, we're just going to deal with lot line adjustment. Basically, it's just the two of you are here and have it done, it's kind of guaranteed.
Because that apparent right-of-way actually does all end up on Mr. Vader's land.
Yes.
His, his land doesn't stop at the...
Yeah, my land, well, the new survey stops on the other side.
Right, it doesn't stop on the eastern side of that right-of-way. It stops on the western side of that right-of-way.
So how does Mr. Landry access his property?
Through that right-of-way.
Through that right-of-way, so the right-of-way has to remain so that Mr. Landry can access his property?
Yes, yes.
Exactly, exactly.
That was basically my question. How was this guy, Raymond Landry, gonna get access to his property?
They are neighbors of Justin, so they access the same road.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, where, 68th Street, so that, that paper road, 7th, 7th Street is... You can't hear us.
Yeah, if you're gonna speak, you have to come and come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
But, but, well, I guess you have to wait for your public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
I was all excited.
Up, down, up, down.
So basically, that paper street is between him and Justin.
Yeah, that basically separates our property.
So is there any, are we creating any legal, legalness to the town to say, okay, now that Mr. Vader owns all that right-of-way, can you shut it down?
No, because he owned it.
I owned it. Yeah, the right-of-way's been there before I had it.
Well, not the way you explained it to me. Because you said, this property here, this lot here, was this and this.
Correct, and Mr. Vader owns all of that.
Okay, so he owned all of this regardless?
Correct.
Okay. And he owns this little piece too, which owns...
Right-of-way.
Okay, so that's a little bit better. A little comfortable, a little comfortable with that. And is there any legalness that we need to put in the deed saying that that is a right-of-way so Mr. Landry could have access to his?
All deeds will have to reflect the information that's shown on the plan that gets recorded.
Okay.
So with this plan being recorded this way, that he's been asked to stay in place.
Okay.
That could be on the plan, on the deeds that I bought from the town when I bought the property served.
Okay.
So I would have to refer, refer to that, but I'm sure that it is.
Yeah, well, sometimes things get disappear when they get recorded, so we want to make sure that that stays on there.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. If you please reach into your seats, we'll have public comment. Is there anyone that would like to give us some public comment?
You sure you don't want to?
Okay. All right. Then seeing as there's no public comment, we will close public comment and back to the board. So, any other further questions from the board? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to revoke jurisdiction.
Okay. Any discussion regarding jurisdiction? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Any other motions?
I will make a motion that we approve the lot line adjustment proposal to allow the applicants to go to register new deed, as shown on the plan. Need a date for the plan, August 1st, 2023? No, that's not... Yeah, that's the August 1st, 2023 plan.
Looks like there's a revised date, September 12th.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because...
Yep. 9/12/24.
Do you want to also include that the applicant has to change the deed to be closed? With both his and his wife's name?
Yeah, actually, we don't, I'll do his deeds at all.
You don't have to worry about that, because that would be a lot merger that the board would begin to act on when he brought it in.
Right.
Plus, he doesn't, he doesn't have to do that, he doesn't want to.
Also, we don't do the lot mergers, but, but even if, even if we did do a lot...
We have to verify that there's no...
Right.
Back to the assessor.
Right, so the, in this case, all they have to know is that our approval of a lot line adjustment doesn't grant the lot line adjustment, it allows them to file deeds, and that doesn't take effect until the deeds are filed in Rockingham. So that's beyond our control.
Do we have a second to the motion?
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
I will add, for those, you'll discover this when you get around to doing the deeds, but if you have a mortgage company, they'll need to be notified before you file for the deed, new deeds. Uncle's apologies.
Okay, and that public hearing is closed. Second public hearing tonight is 7 New Boston Road, MAP R19, Lot 8, Zone C3, Acrofer. Proposal to amend the existing site plan to include a new onsite septic and well. The proposed use of the existing structure is cold storage warehouse with office mezzanine. Mark?
No. Any questions? Don't have a statement?
No.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll be down. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. It was good to see you.
Okay, my name's Mark Heitz, I was I at 76 Hunt Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. I'm here to speak on behalf of this property at 7 New Boston Road. I did, I had received some comments from Mr. Greenwood, originally, so there's a little confusion probably on, on your plans. Originally, we were going with the, the septic system plans that were approved by the town, health officer submitted to the state, was approved, that was installed. They went to install the well on the property, and it came to light that the town at that point felt that it needed to come before the planning board. I went and spoke to Mr. Greenwood, we were gonna proceed with that existing plan, I received a copy of his comments after looking at that, and I was, so those would have been the original plans you got. And then, when I saw the comments, I was concerned that it might be some confusion and things that maybe wasn't addressed, so then I brought in today these amended site plan papers that you hadn't seen prior to that.
Okay, so we're here to approve the amended site, request to approve the amended site plan, which has a well and septic, which I understand has already been installed?
It has a septic one.
Has a septic installed, but no well. Okay.
They wanted to install the well, but when they went to get the well from it, that was when they were directed that because there were changes being made to a commercial site, that there should be site plan review.
Yep.
And so, the confusion is, I view this as an as-built plan, and a recording of information about existing circumstances. And so I was very comfortable with Mark using the septic system plan from 2022, because it's a survey plan, showed the building, showed the new location of the septic system, gave us the information that the planning board likes to see with a site plan review. But in doing that, when the plan was, when that septic plan was included in the application package, then I did my standard review. My standard review looks at the site plan review regulations, and I indicated everything that we say we want to see that doesn't show on that plan. But I prefaced that in my notes by saying, I consider this an existing conditions plan, that would be. But when I had, when Mark saw that extensive list, he called his engineer and said, please put on the things you can put on that address those issues that Glenn put in his notes.
Okay.
So in a remarkably quick turnaround, we're talking Thursday of last week to today, with a holiday in the middle, we have a plan that addresses the issues that I call out on my letter. So it's pretty remarkable, because quite frankly, as your planner, I was comfortable with the first plan, because what we're doing is a review of a plan where the situations already exist. And it has been, it has been an odd building for a very long time.
Mm-hmm. So when we go back in the history, all the way to 1991...
All the way back.
There were clear letters of facts and findings that were reported, having to do with this, saying that there would not be a well or septic, that no water would be pumped to the site, there'd be no employees here for longer than four hours, there'd be no office or shop in the building, there'll be a catchment system, so any materials filled will be captured and removed, and any further expansion or improvement to the lot will require a new site plan review, which is what they're doing. And I'm assuming that all of these facts and figures you'd like to go away.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
From that 1991.
1991, the carry-through that's actually in the deed for the property, now go away with the new amended site plan?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure we're all on the same page.
You're absolutely understanding the elements that are out there.
So Mark, you no longer own the property, correct?
What's that?
You no longer own the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
You should have a letter for, notarized letter of authorization.
Oh, yeah, that, Robin's got it, that's fine. So the reason I'm asking is, obviously, they intend to have employees here, do we know how many?
Yes. Yeah, that's addressed on number two on the parking calculations. They put up to five employees.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I think they, part of the driving force was that the site next door was approved for that many employees. I honestly don't see that that happening in foreseeable future, to have five employees.
And obviously, now that there's going to be well and septic, there'll be no need for employees to leave after being on the property for four hours?
Right, correct, and they're proposing that the hours of operation be 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Will there be an office or shop in the building?
Will it what?
It says no office or shop in the building? Okay, yeah, the office mezzanine, thank you, okay. So there is going to be an office. That looks like those are the only really serious things that are changing. Okay.
What was it that changed that enabled the new septic system to go in?
I'm sorry, Peter, I, I can't hear very well.
What was it that changed on either the rules or the layout or the septic design that allowed the new septic system to go in, get approved, where the letter that's...
Well, I think, I think going back when, it really came down to that Mr. Dunky wanted to put his building on that site. He didn't want to put in a, because the way he was gonna use the property, he didn't want to install a septic system, and he didn't want to put in a well. And so he said, well, the town, I think, told him that, well, that has to happen on commercial properties, and he said, we're not gonna, wonder if we put restrictions on it, and so that's kind of the agreement, I guess, they come up with, was, okay, yeah, you can't be there so many hours because you don't have facilities, can be used for storage only.
Yeah, but what I'm asking about is the, all the, what I'm referring to is the facts and figures about the setbacks required in the wetlands, and there not being enough, there was a little math for the, there wasn't enough area of soil to put them in and put a well in, or...
So Jones and Beetz took a look at the regulations, went out with the health officer, and came up with a design, which she approved, and then went to the state, and then the state approved it, and then it got installed.
Right, yeah.
When, when, when Mr. Dunky owned the building and erected, he only had it for storage, which is why he didn't have a lot of the other amenities you would normally have back in 91, you're talking 30-plus years ago.
Plus, this is in a viral system septic plan, which they did not have in 1991.
I think that's the difference, is that what, what changed was that the septic systems are new.
It's a raised system.
Yeah, and so that you could, you could fit it on the smaller area that, that back when Larry did it, said, you know, you don't have the room here for any septic system, so, you know, you can't have an office.
Because I was, embarrassingly, I was here in 1991, although, when I looked at those materials, it was challenging to remember the discussions that we had, but I do remember that at the time, Mr. Dunky had another facility in town.
Correct.
And it was a thing, or EFCI, which became a real nightmare, but it wasn't a nightmare... And it was a thing for EFCI, which became a real nightmare, but it wasn't a nightmare when Mr. Dunky had it. So his argument was that if his employee, he had, he had a site where he had employees all day. And so if, if they brought stuff to the storage area, if they hadn't went to the bathroom, they just went back to the other office. It wasn't, it, it really wasn't, this was a completely satellite operation for what he was doing at the time. And now, the desire was it for not to be a satellite operation for something else, but for it to be a standalone facility and as such, it needs a septic and a well and a site review. And that's what we're accomplishing tonight.
Any other questions from anyone else on the board? Seeing none, and we've heard from Glenn. Any member of the public, public comment on this plan? Seeing no public wishing to make comment, we will close public comment. So it looks like you need, they've requested two waivers. Yeah, we do, thank you. Is that a motion on? All those in favor of accepting jurisdiction? Opposed? Okay, thank you for kicking me on my toes, appreciate it. Okay, so they have two waiver requests. The first is from Stormwater Management. Jones and Beach engineers request a waiver from this section. The lot is within the Aquafer Protection District that allows maximum impervious of 15% without stormwater treatment. The amended site plan is 10.8% impervious. Any questions? Do we have a motion on granting the waiver?
So?
Second?
I just have a quick question. Do we, the fact that it's in the Aquafer Protection District, does that?
No.
Impacting at all?
Because it means it have that, a maximum impervious of 15% and they only have 10.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have the request for a waiver from outdoor lighting. The existing building has wall-mounted lighting and no additional lighting is proposed with this amended plan. Any discussion? Motion?
Well, the only question I have is, it's an amended site plan. Do we normally require them to come into compliance with the Lighting Act?
Yes, if they were proposing new fixtures.
Okay, so no, so we don't, if they have wall-mounted lighting? I, I assume that that's compliant anyway, but if it wasn't compliant?
If they were not proposing new lighting in any, in any, in any area, then they wouldn't have to.
So we don't only apply that to any changes? Okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll move that we grant the waiver for the outdoor lighting part.
So we have, second from Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the outdoor lighting waiver? And that is unanimous. Is there any further discussion on the topic? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the amended site plan?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Yes, Glenn?
We still, this is still going to result in a letter of facts and findings. Because this is not a survey plan and the registry only accepts survey plans, which is fine. But the, the letter of facts and findings will say that it replaces the letter of facts and findings that's on file and use the recording information for that previous letter in the new one.
Okay.
So that it will always get called up, that they call up together and somebody can see it. One succeeds the other.
So we'll add to the motion, that Glenn will provide a letter of facts and findings to be recorded at the registry. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that again is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
This is not your father's planning board.
Mark?
This is not your father's planning board.
Mark, don't forget that you should probably correct your deed once that letter of facts and findings is done. Have the deed corrected to, to show that those previous letters of fact and findings are no longer applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the third hearing tonight is Spiro 125 LLC. Welcome back. This is at 23 Route 125, MAPR 3 Lot 2-A, Zone C3, Aquafer. The site plan application is to amend the existing site plan for a home improvement business with office space and vehicle parking and an area to store dumpsters. Welcome back.
Yep, that's what we're looking to do, we're, we've remodeled the property and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Geno Spiro, I live at 66 Drew Road in Gary, New Hampshire.
Karen Spiro, 323 Emerson Ave, Hampstead.
And here is the site plan.
Yes, so, Ms. Spiro came in and talked with us. She wrote her letter to the planning board probably a month ago. Came to, I think, our work session or maybe, I think it was the work session in October. I don't think it was, was it the work session or?
The work session, yes.
And we had, we had counseled her to put on the existing site plan, the configuration they wanted to use for their storage and dumpsters. And so that's what they've done with the outline. Now, it's, it's kind of vague and a little hard to see, but they have an area that comes off the back of their existing building where they intend to park dumpster units. And at the time that we spoke with her, we indicated that we understood that there was tons of available parking on the site. You can see from this that there is. They have done interior renovations that they've not permitted for. And I think that that work has all occurred already. So this goal was to have an amended plan that showed this, this use for these dumpsters and having a place that they would be parked and screened.
And the screening is?
A fence.
There'd be privacy slots in that fence as well, so you can't see through it.
How tall fence?
Six feet.
Six feet, so which is the same as the dumpsters?
Yeah, well, the dumpsters are about four to five feet tall.
Right.
Yep, so nothing would be sticking up past there.
And it's behind the building anyways.
Yeah, it's behind the building, yeah. We want to have a nice, clean appearance from the street.
I just had one question on this, I saw the, the painted island on the plan. Did that ever get built? I don't remember seeing anything in there.
I don't remember seeing it.
I, I don't?
Well, it's painted, doesn't that mean it's just painted on the pavement?
Uh, well, it says island. The island implies that it's, it's elevated.
Yeah, it's just all open space right now.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, sorry. I just noticed the word island announced.
Yeah, and that would fall actually within the fenced area.
And again, we have no comments from the department heads. Any further comment from the board?
Roof looks nice.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're really happy with how it came out so far, really, so, thank you very much. Thank you very much, very proud of it.
Okay, well, since no one has any comments, do we have a motion? Oh, wait, except there's a jurisdiction.
I'm seconded.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting jurisdiction? Unanimous. Okay, that passes. And now do we have a motion on the plan?
I'll move that we accept the plan as modified, showing the 60 by 120 foot closed dumpster area and the office space in the main building.
Okay, motion by Peter, second by?
I'll second it.
By Robin Duquette, okay.
This, this will also give a letter of facts and findings that will be attached actually to this plan at the registry.
Add that to the motion. Yeah? Sure?
Well, my comment is, this is a plan that's not their plan, that's sketched up, so we probably can't re-record this plan?
No, 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 that's why I'm doing a letter of facts and findings. It gets, no, when I said that, we do a letter of facts and findings and it gets attached to that site plan that's recorded at the registry, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What's he good?
Yeah?
Awesome.
Hey, we are out of here early tonight, baby.
No, no, thank you guys.
I know, I'm sorry.
You meant to go.
I did, I did. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Glenn, are you familiar with the certificates of occupancy? So they have a revision date, plan reviewed by the title, approved or denied, and applicant signature and approval denial signature? Is this something we need to be signing off on?
Pedro wants us to sign it. He wants us to believe this is.
Oh, for this, for this one, for this certificate of occupancy that they're, that they'll get? Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So just plan reviewed by planning board?
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, maybe at the, at, at the public hearing of October 16th? Or is it the 15th? Or the 15th? If it's the 15th, it must be Tuesday.
And revision date?
And what?
The revision date, is that the revision on the, the date on the? What do we use for revision date? Today's date?
I, I think that's going to lead him to believe that there's a plan. So I think really you should put that, is there any room for you to put there, there will be a fax, a letter of fax and findings?
No, but we'll write it in anyway.
Write it in anyway, then he'll, he'll come to me and he'll say, what the hell is a letter of fax and findings if you know it's granted? It's a good plan. We talk all the time.
Okay.
He's a good, he's a good guy.
Oh, he's a good egg.
All right, he's doing a good job. Okay, so while we have all this stuff, let's skip the zoning ordinances and regulations for a minute. Do we have a motion to accept the September 17 minutes? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. And we have correspondence, we have a letter asking for an escrow release for Summit Distributing application.
I can't believe that's still outstanding. So presumably, there's no outstanding? I guess that would be researched, but?
I'm sorry.
Which property is Summit Distributing?
Oh, Summit Distributing was the?
The gas station, gas station.
The gas station that they're going to do, okay. So we're going to release what's left?
Forever, yes.
Okay, release whatever's left?
Years, years later.
Because we've, we've already released their other one.
It went to court and then it went to the ZBA and then?
Went back to court again?
And eventually it didn't get the relief they needed at the ZBA. So it never came to the planning board.
So can we have a motion?
It did get the relief, but they, it just was a mess. So they pulled out.
They did, they did eventually pull out, yeah.
They won, they pulled out the deal by the time they won.
So can we have a motion to release their funds, less, or the remainder of their funds?
How do you know what the remainder is?
The balance.
I, I understand what you mean.
Well, in this, in this case?
But how do we verify that? That's my question.
Oh, it goes through?
Well, in this case, it never came to the planning board, so neither Dennis nor I ever charged any money to it.
Okay.
So unless?
It says, it says it's $5,000 in professional fees on here.
Yeah, see, unless, right, unless the ZBA?
ZBA is a separate, completely separate thing and we already released there.
Okay.
Ah, yeah, so there's no?
Because when, when they didn't appeal the decision.
So, so we never used any, there's no balance? There's just the balance of $1,000, there's no cost against it?
So to answer your question only, what happens is, and I know this is in the past, that this goes to Dennis and Dennis or Glenn's invoice comes in or any invoice against it? And there's like an accounting of it, so they have a different office?
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion for that or is it just that?
Motion? No, oh, no, I guess we can just?
You should make a motion.
Yeah, I was going to say we should.
They're like the finding doctor to determine any outstanding balance. We find any outstanding balance.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, perfect. Okay, and now on to zoning ordinances. We did three public hearings in 45 minutes.
Let's keep it moving.
Don't stop, don't talk about you. Two or four times.
So Pedro wants us to sign those forms, we probably should revise them so there's a place and everything for us on those occupancy permit forms.
They got revised.
They got revised. For the applicant? That's Pedro. Well, I kept looking it over, that's where I know it so well.
I didn't say that, I may have thought it, but I'm not sure.
I saw those waves coming in.
So at our last meeting, we did move to have a number of articles moved forward to public hearing at our meeting in November, public hearing night. And we have a few more to work on. So we're talking about building height and it looks like, Glenn did a nice little chart for us.
Well, it's a, it's a rat nest. Building height in the town of Kingston is a rat nest.
Who knew?
We have been, well, we go from this high of this 45 feet, which in the memo that Graham sent over today, apparently only feels comfortable with 35 feet.
Yeah, books.
And we have one odd one that says building height would be one floor. That's an age restricted, one floor. That's, who the hell lets a zoning ordinance go through saying one floor? That would be me, but that makes no sense because there's no, who the hell determines what that one floor measurement is? That's just insane.
And the whole thing is, we've already got many elderly housing complexes with more than one floor?
With more than one floor. So, so what I've done here is tell you what, what zoning district it is, what the present standard is, where it's found in the standard, and then a column so we can say if we want to propose a, a new height for that or if we want to somehow do something uniform that just gets put into all these places. Interestingly, Historic District 1 and 2, no building height listed anywhere. What? The hay!
What were you thinking?
What the hay? How is it been, how has that been for 45 years?
As long as they're fine old homes, they get to be there.
We need big barns.
Right, exactly. How is that possible?
It's possible because it's, it's, it's built out and therefore nobody can, developer can come in on a vacant lot, wanted to build a, a high efficiency.
There've been new, there've been new homes put in the, in the district. What the heck? Well, how? Can you imagine? In, in the end, it's my fault because the zoning ordinance is sort of my fault. In, in the end, it's my fault, because the zoning ordinance is sort of my bag, so Historic District, I like to say, isn't really my bag, um, it's the Historic District Commission's bag, but in the end, it's my bag. We need to, whatever we determine our height is going to be, it needs to make its way into the Historic District as well.
I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Thank you. But beyond that, what, what they're handling, what they're doing.
So at the risk of.
They're still mad about it.
Uh, under complicating things, is there any reason we couldn't just say it's 35 feet across the board for every unit, moving forward? I mean, obviously.
We can do that except, we have 45 feet in two commercial zones.
But those would be grandfathered in, so then any new builds would have to be.
But how tall is CSG, I mean, not CSG, some, the, the.
266.
Distribution Center, 266, 125.
It's every, it's whatever we, whatever our house allowance was, because they went right to the.
So that was 45 feet then?
So they would.
So they're 45 feet already. Okay.
But I don't know how, if we have a fire chief who's saying that they can't simply.
I know.
But he's saying.
Expose anything above 35 feet, how we could occupy.
Occupy.
Still.
His concern is about egressing.
Because when you get, when you get to, you know, 45 feet in a distribution center, not people walking around up there.
And that's an impact we had before when we were ladder trucking.
I would think.
Isn't the school, high school 45 feet, the least 45?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that is. Pre-existing, non-conformist.
The new high school is way more than 45.
Yeah, the new high school.
Of course, the town never has to follow its own grid, so apparently we didn't. But you would think, something where we're, where we're sending our kids, that the fire department might have said something about that.
And there are fewer kids, so maybe they don't want a second floor.
And we don't like our kids like kids, don't like our kids.
The new high school isn't over 45, it's.
Huh?
The new high school, it's only two stories.
Oh, but they're.
That profile is pretty freaking high.
The gym is high.
The gym is high.
The gym is.
Think of, think of what that profile looks like from the.
The gyms, but I'm just pointing out.
That's sprinkled in front there, it is a big area, I bet it's more than 45.
Oh, it's more circuses?
Is it sprinkled out? It's gotta be sprinkled.
Yeah, that's.
So that's the kicker.
And maybe that needs to be in here, if the building's sprinkled, there could be an allowance.
You've got some work to do, Mr. Glenn.
Well, I was loving where Robin was going.
Well, then let's, let's keep going.
I, I was, I was absolutely not walking her back if you guys were okay with that, because setting one frigging standard would be really nice.
Yeah.
It would be really.
I think Graham has kind of written it for us.
Yeah.
He proposed keeping the height restriction for occupiable space and life safety purposes in a maximum of 35 feet, with no window or eaves opening, 16 and 35 feet.
And that language could actually be added to each of these things.
And then, this could be subject to change if they, if they do get a ladder truck, or an aerial truck, because it would be an aerial truck.
Well, for anybody.
Or sprinklers.
For anybody who's sprinkled.
Oh, sprinkled, yeah.
I mean, because we would add that language to this, so anyone who's sprinkled could go, could exceed that height limit.
Or with special, with approval from, right, because he's saying there are instances where it would approve it. That's a lot, I'll put that in there.
It isn't really, in, in virtually every one of these, there is a paragraph in the ordinance that says building height, and that's where it is.
Or just put the building height in.
So we could add that additional language into that building height paragraph.
Unless the building is sprinkled, or unless that space is unoccupied.
And, and don't we want to change that one floor to 35 feet?
Yeah. Change that?
I, I, when I read that, I was like, oh, how, and it's been there for years.
That is so funny.
Years, I tell you.
And the, the other thing we have an issue is, it, it's come up, and that is that we don't define building height. We should refer to either IBSA, the International Building Code, or the State Building Code, which is the same thing.
I think that's what we.
Just, just reference to the, as defined.
It's how Pedro describes that it has to be, when someone asks them what the height limit is, because I've heard him tell several people.
Yeah, yeah, and we've had that discussion, uh, when he, he asked about it, and we looked it up, and it's, it's from Gray Plain, and it has to do with, you know, about six feet from the building, and an average of the different sides.
Right.
And, and so, instead of putting all that wording in there, it's already in the IBSA.
It's the standard foundation that you see.
Yeah, so I think we should just reference it as defined, you know, building height as defined by.
And then when that is changed at any given time.
Then it, it changes our.
It still applies to what?
Yeah, that's the best thing about it, you just, you don't reference any number, you just a, as determined by.
As defined in.
Because we're not even allowed to, well, we can't make things less.
Right, we can't reduce it, we can't be more strict. Not only is they, you would say it's okay.
That's right, you have to send it to them for review, yeah.
Send it to who?
Uh, the state.
The State Building Code Review.
It's one of the things, things that passed this year.
It's, yes, it's new as of this year.
This year, yeah.
Is that what you just said, gonna be added to every ordinance?
It's gonna be added.
Are we gonna put a definition?
No, I think we should be adding in every area that says building height, just like that. We also have the statement, building, the measurement of building height follows the procedure found in IBC.
Okay. Have we all agreed?
Yes.
Yes.
Then, um, we can direct Glenn to go ahead and, um, put together the words.
I'll make the changes here, and we'll.
And do we have a motion to bring that forward to the public hearing in November?
In November.
So, okay, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. All right. We also have travel trailers and recreational.
Are we gonna do age restricted housing, or not?
Oh, yeah, you're right, sorry, age restricted housing. That's the space between them.
Well, again, if Graham's proposing 40 feet.
That's perfect, I hadn't thought about the, uh, fire danger, about building burning, and then 25 feet away. Yeah, so you'd melt the, sorry, and, and 40 feet's perfect, because that's exactly what it is everywhere else, we have a 20-foot setback on either side of the line, so you have 40 feet townwide.
So we would, we would make those changes, if we go from 60 feet to 40 feet.
Correct.
Why would we go, hold on, why would we go from 60 feet to 40 feet? I don't understand that.
We had 60, 60 feet is what exists right now.
Between housing.
Between.
Age restricted houses.
Between age restricted houses.
Building, and in present town, it's only 40.
Convince me that it needs to be 40 feet then.
Do I increase density?
Because they've already.
I don't want more density.
No, it's because we've already got all these developments all over town that are.
I, I understand that.
They're actually 25 feet.
Yeah.
I understand that, but if it's 60 feet, then we restrict.
But, but, everywhere else in town, it's 40 feet, so why would you make the age restricted units, which are, tend to be high density?
Because all the old people in there need that safety.
Easy.
But why, why would they be any different than a single family house?
Yeah, as long as you can get out of the building, that's, that's.
Single family houses can be.
Yeah.
40 feet.
40 feet apart.
Apart, why shouldn't?
But it's 60 feet now.
Not the single family.
I'm asking, why are we changing it from 60 feet to 40 feet?
A, we're not enforcing it 60 feet, and B, it doesn't make sense to have the age restricted housing, which is a higher density house, you get a density bonus, uh, be more restricted, 20 feet more restricted than, than a single family house.
But again, that, that, that doesn't tell me, it doesn't help me say, why go from 60 feet, which is the, the rules today, to 40 feet?
So that's only the rule in.
Age restricted.
Age restricted, everywhere else in town, it's 40.
That's great, just leave it like that.
What you do is, if you look at, you look at the, the reason for the age, the 60-foot separation, and I don't think we can come up with a valid reason why 60 feet was chosen.
Safety.
But Graham disagrees.
Yeah, and.
In Graham's letter to us, he said 40 was plenty.
Well, I disagree with that, so.
Okay.
I mean, in cities, you don't have 10-feet separation.
Yeah, but then we're talking about exactly what you were talking about, having more construction and changing all the housing and all that sort of stuff.
60 feet, or are we going to 40?
I, 40.
So here's the difference, they don't, they have to be, the buildings have to be 60 feet apart, but you can have all these units in a building. So that's gonna, that's gonna encourage more multi-occupancy buildings, rather than fewer buildings further, um, closer together.
But we, we discussed that, so the density of the buildings were limited to three, but 60 feet apart. That's the way I remember it. People wanted to put in six, but 60 feet apart, but I, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, you, you can fit fewer.
Right, we want fewer.
Units if, if they're 40 feet apart, and they're one unit 40 feet apart.
But the rules we have that say they can have three dwellings or three condo units in one building, right?
But that won't affect density at all, because density right now is based on the amount of land that is high, dry, buildable land.
Right, and then there's a, then you multiply it by a number, a set number of bedrooms.
Correct, so it doesn't matter what the configuration is, it, the density is based on the land, not the number of units.
Help me understand this, the land has 60 acres, I can have X amount of dwelling units within that 60 house.
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms within that 60 acres, but they have to be 60 feet apart.
I don't.
No.
No.
Well, those dwellings.
Not if what you're doing is increasing the number, you can, you can have up to eight units.
Yep.
You can, you could have just four units in it.
Yep.
If presently, if you have four units, the next time you have a building of four units, you have to keep them 60 feet apart.
Right.
So instead, you have eight units, and then you do another building of eight units, and you, because you're having to keep them 60 feet apart, you do bigger buildings.
But there'd be.
Because you're still going to.
But we're still limited to the number of bedrooms in that.
Right.
Facility.
You're still gonna keep the same number of bedrooms, yeah.
It's just how they build the bedrooms, so if you have them closer together, it means you have more open space, and more of a cluster, the closer together they are, rather than spreading them out. So it gives you more open space.
So if you want more open space, we assume that 40 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, in, in the real world.
But it's true. You understand?
The difference between 20, I mean, 60 feet and 40 feet is a huge amount, not when what we were setting in the pack was 25 feet. The difference between 60 feet and 25 feet, that's a big difference.
Okay.
It's whatever you.
I need to think about it then, I need to lay it out.
Reason two then is, all of the complexes aren't 60 feet apart.
No, I, I understand that, but.
Yeah, so that was kind of like, this ordinance was here, and nobody was.
In fact, we don't have a place in town where they are.
Well, we can, we can start doing that now, this is a whole new board, we can say, hey, it has to be 60 feet, it doesn't mean that.
So all it's gonna do is spread out?
Yeah, exactly.
Spread it out.
Maybe we reduce the, the building that we have.
So when you spread out and you're not clustered, now you're building more roads for the town to maintain, you know, you're building all, you know, it increases.
I don't think we have these big tracts of land in Kingston that much.
But that's what, but that's basically what's gonna happen, is you're gonna spread it out, so it's gonna be more, more cost for the town of Kingston to maintain.
Again, I have to think about it, I have to lay it out.
Need further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move. If we make building separations to 40 feet. If we change it from 60 feet to 40 feet in, uh, age restricted housing.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, as I'm reading this, it also says no individual unit will exceed 1,500 square feet of living space. And that's not true, we're not following that either.
Succeed, exceed.
Exceed.
Yeah, so we have a minimum of 600, and.
So the detached housing, a lot of it in granite fields, is two stories, over 1,500 square feet, in some of the other places as well, over at.
So you're seeing here really 3,000 feet?
No, because they're capes and such, but, um, over at Kings Landing, I think there's some of the second floors that are bigger. So we're not following that either. As I'm looking at this, I'm thinking of the listings that I've seen, they're bigger. I think the 1,500 square feet may be over at Ash Drive, definitely way under that at, um, at Lamplighter, way under at Lamplighter.
So are these two different, because the next one refers to no individual unit shall exceed 2,400 square feet.
That's a.
Different.
That's a four units per building, yeah, and the first one is.
Two, two bedrooms per unit.
Mm-hmm. Is that conflicting?
Keep them more affordable?
Yeah.
I know, I guess it would matter.
But, yeah, but are the, are those in conflict with each other? No individual unit in the first place is 1,500?
That must be because we break that ordinance up into affordable, um, rate units and market rate units.
Okay.
So the market rate units, you must be able to go to.
About 2,400.
Okay.
And so, and I would expect that all the ones that you've, you've mentioned, none of those were affordable.
Correct.
They were all just marketed.
We don't have any affordable over 5,500, so we don't have any.
People worry we don't have any.
So that's why we're 2,400, so it's not like we're not, we are following our rules.
Yeah.
We just have a rule with no confusing.
Yeah, so.
Exactly, but you don't.
Oh, we don't. We, we don't have the incentives.
Okay. So the motion that we just made, change separation of buildings from 60 to 40 supersedes what we do a couple weeks ago, going from 60 to 25.
Yeah.
Making sure we're all right on the same. Yes, Robin keeps pushing me stuff because she's making sure we're covering all the bases. Okay.
The final thing I did was, we had had a discussion about recreational vehicles, and there was a section 301, point nine, that talks about travel trailers, and how they can be restricted in time, um, on individual properties throughout town, but it didn't list recreational vehicles. So that first paragraph is the, the section 301 with recreational vehicles included. Below, you see that in our present ordinance, we have two definitions of recreational vehicles. We have the definition of recreational vehicles in the floodplain protection ordinance, which is federal, that's, that's word that has been developed by the National Flood Assurance Program, and that's the shorter one here. And then the second, um, definition of recreational vehicle was developed by Huddy when she did our new campground ordinance last year.
Yeah, neither made it to the definition section.
She was, she was cognizant of the smaller one, she, she added it into the larger one.
Okay.
So if we're going to put a definition in our section, we should use the bigger one, because it incorporates all.
Yeah, I think that's, actually, that was the whole driving force between discovering that our travel trailer ordinance only restricted travel trailers, and she went through the process. I didn't find it because I thought it was only looking at definitions. You must have done a search.
No, I looked, I looked through every page, offered the building permit one, and found these two things.
Yeah.
Because I was looking at every page for building height. I just didn't want to miss one, so I just went through every page, and if I got a building height, I looked at, and if I didn't, I went to the next page. It was tedious.
Yeah, I like this.
But so far.
Huddy's, Huddy's has Pickup Camper in there too, which.
Yes, it does.
The, the federal one doesn't, so.
So should we take the Huddy definition?
Yeah.
Put it in the definition section?
In definition section.
Also put it in the section for floodplain development?
Um, I don't wanna do that, because if we.
That's a federal, oh, yeah, we play with federal.
They would be pissed, and then throw something over. So I'm not, I'm not screwed with their, with their definitions.
Okay. So we'll do the definition, we'll put it under. So we'll do the definition, we'll put it under recreational campgrounds, and we'll amend Article 301 dot nine.
And you know what, I should, I will reference the definition as being in, um, section P2 definitions, here. So they can't, so they can't go just to the one in the floodplain and say, "Oh, I thought this was your definition."
Oh, good, okay.
Just, just so that it's clear.
Okay, so we have a, um, pre-arranged a motion.
Yeah, I'll move it, what you just said.
Do you have a second?
Second.
To move it to a public hearing? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous.
Now, the other, the other, um, the, I'm answering one from last week, was Pedro and I have a problem. So...
That's the seasonal...
Seasonal.
Correct, and so he and I will... Still can't do it on Thursday, cause he was gone a couple of days, and I know he's, I may, but either next Monday or next Thursday, we'll, we'll get it.
And we've got to, because there's no meeting but first, um, Tuesday in November, gives you a little extra time.
Can I just clarify one thing? Um, the last meeting, you talked about putting the definition in the P2 recreational vehicle?
Yes.
You still wanna do that?
That's, yes, that, that was what I was just saying.
Okay, did you have...
When I put it, when I put it in P2, uh, no, in, in, um, 301, it's just the word recreational vehicle. And then it's defined in P2. And in P2, we're gonna put the big one, not the little one, but in 301, I'm going to say the definition is found in P2. So that someone can't go to that 301, and then think because they find it in the floodplain ordinance, then that's the one they get to use.
Okay, so we're updating 301 to say that, and we're adding it to P2?
And we're adding it to the definition.
That would help if I had a clear motion, that's all.
Well, that's good.
That is exactly what we're doing.
Any other business that may legally come before the board tonight? Oh, we did, was unanimous? Your, your meeting last night must have been long. Okay. If there's no other business to come before the board, I declare...